Hello, Spark City Council, January 13, 2014, with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Kerrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Kiri.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Pastor Barb West from the Sparks Church of Nazarene. Welcome, Barb.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Happy New Year to all of you. Nice to see you all here this afternoon. Would you bow your heads with me in prayer? Precious Lord, we just come to you, fresh and new now, to thank you for 2013 and for all that we Sparkites were able to do during that year. We thank you for this new year and just ask for your guidance, your provision, your protection, and watch over us as we go through another day here. Lord, there's some that are still not quite healed over the things that transpired at the end of the year. And so we pray for protection over our educators and over all of our schoolchildren. We pray that you would indeed bring healing where healing is needed. And thank you for all of the citizens who came out today. Thank you for Mayor Martini and this great council. And we just pray that you would indeed help us as we go through the business of today. You know everything that's on the agenda, and we ask that your will would be done through it all. May this be a peaceful and good meeting, and may all people be heard, and yet we pray for wisdom for our council to make the decisions on what needs to be done. Thank you for hearing our prayer. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor West, appreciate it. Would you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Smith? Would you lead us?
Will you join me, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on, next is comments from the public. I've got a bunch of speaker cards up here, but I think most of them are for Agenda Item Number Eight, Eight Point One. Does anybody want to speak under comments from the public? Yes, sir. Come on down. We've got a handheld for him. We're going to give you a handheld microphone if you want to wait one second. Just give us your name for the record, please.
On Porovato Street in Sparks.
Okay.
All right. I'd like to request that the city council -- can you hear me?
Yes.
I'd like to request that the city council investigate the possibility of establishing a quiet zone for the Sierra Pacific Railroad tracks in the city of Sparks. The trains, as they come through, they required to sound their horns, and at two and three o'clock in the morning, they wake me up out of a sound sleep. And I live above Body -- Body Boulevard, and you can imagine what it's like down on C Street. So I'd like to ask the city council to consider establishing Sparks' quiet zones for Sierra Pacific -- or is that the name of the place?
It's a -- I think it's Union Pacific.
Union Pacific, whatever. And I'd also like --
It used to be. Originally was South Pacific.
Okay, thanks. I'd also like to request the Sparks City Council consider adopting a resolution in support of safe schools for our elementary et cetera schools. Last November, I passed around some of these bracelets, and I've gotten a fairly large response from people. I've passed out another 600 of them. And we're incorporating so that we can do it as a nonprofit, so that we could spread the word around. And I'd be happy to talk to you more about it. I think my three minutes is almost up.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Sean, you got those down? Okay. So we'll look into those later on. Thank you, Mr. King. Both. Yeah, what we'll probably do is put it on an Agenda Item, bring it back to the council, and see what they want to do as far as an ordinance for quiet zone.
Great, thanks. And I've got more wristbands if you want to pass them around.
I'll let you do that. Anyone else under public comment? Shirley?
It's been a while since I've been here. I almost forgot what to do. Can you all hear me? Members of the city council, I am here today because I understand you will be discussing the issue of a special use permit. I don't know if I can stay for the whole meeting, so I wanted to speak now. Please do not allow this to happen at the Legends Shopping Center. We do not need, or do we want, another Walmart in this area? The answer is no to both of these questions. Whenever a Walmart is open, several little mom-and-pop stores close because they cannot fight the competition. To put one in the Legends will probably spell doom for the Target store there now, plus others. Look around you, council members. Do you not see the old vacant Target building on Prater, the old Lowe's on Body Boulevard, plus other vacant stores in the big-box store malls that have shut down due to the economy? With six Walmarts in our immediate area, we have already reached the saturation point of these stores. One is within easy reach of anyone who desires to shop there. I, for one, do not go there only as a last resort. I prefer to shop in the stores that have been established here for many years and try to buy things made in America. I find these stores harder to find, especially since Walmart offers cheap merchandise made in China and are inferior to things made here in the good old USA. It is time that people stopped enriching this family, who are billionaires, and like Starbucks, wants a Walmart everywhere. When is this greed gone to stop? It will stop only when our elected officials say, "No more." They state that they will put more people to work, but what they are not telling you is about the low wages they pay, no benefits, and how unfair they are to their employees. Employees in many other states have sued them for better working conditions. I'm sure that being a right-to-work state like Nevada, this prevents it from happening here. I have a Walmart within one mile of my home, yet I have stayed loyal to the same grocery store that I have gone to for years, and I'm sure one city councilman can attest to this. When are you, our elected officials, gone to stay loyal to our little mom-and-pop stores and say no to the big giants who force their way into every town in our country and threaten to sue towns that deny them? It's time for all of you to grow a backbone and vote no on this issue. Thank you.
I hear -- anyone else under public comment? Okay, let's move on to the approval of the Agenda. Oh, come on, Lucille, I'm sorry. And when you're done, could you fill out one of these cards? Or did you already fill it out?
Yes.
You did, okay, thanks.
And I'd like to say good morning to the councilmen and good afternoon. I am Lucille Aiden, and I live on East Lincoln Way. I've been there since 1966. And my oppose is for the Walmart that's supposed to be opening in Sparks. The traffic on East Lincoln Way has grown since Legends and Marina opened, and I can just imagine what it'll be if a Walmart is there. I personally don't think we need another Walmart in Reno or in Sparks because we have enough grocery stores in the area to accommodate everybody that's here. And I think if you have another Walmart in Sparks, if this city council approves, that will hurt your elections when time comes. I have been past president of the Reno-Sparks NAACP and past chair of Washoe County Library Board, and I have been in the area long enough to know what we need. And we have enough grocery stores in our area, and another giant Walmart we do not need, especially in my area, and it is close to my area. Thanks.
Thanks, Lucille. Anyone else? Okay. Let's move on to approval of the Agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order or looking for a motion? Does that all jump in at once? It's not working. Go ahead, Ed.
I'd like to see if we can move Eight Point One up to after consent items, so we can -- we don't have to keep everyone around for a couple hours.
All right. Okay, we have a motion, a second to move Eight Point One up. What's the consensus? Everybody, are you okay with that, Jay? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to move Eight Point One up after -- under the first general business item. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Okay, so can I have an motion to approve the Agenda as amended?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Second by Lawson. Moved by Kerrigan, second by Lawson, to approve the Agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Seems to be working now. Passed unanimously. Okay. Three Point One, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the utility rate workshop for December 2, 2013, and the regular Sparks City Council meeting for December 9, 2013. Any omissions, deletions, or corrections? If not, looking for a motion.
Who can approve?
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, and the first second was, I heard, first Councilman Schmidt to approve the minutes as approved by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, consent items, Five One through Five Five. Anybody want to pull a consent item? If not, looking for a motion. Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith, to approve consent items Five One through Five Five. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, let's move on to Eight Point One, planning and zoning. PCN 12035, consideration of and possible action of an appeal of the Planning Commission's action to approve a special use permit request to allow for an approximately 180,000 square foot big-box retail building in 17.69 acres in the size -- in size in the NUD, New Urban District Legends Marina Plan Development, zoning and district located at 1289 East Lincoln Way. Okay, what we're going to do is we'll go over -- staff will go over the process that we went through to get this approved, the Planning Commission. Then we will have the appellant make his presentation, his appeal. Then we'll open it up. The council will be advised that they can ask questions throughout the process. Then we'll open up the public hearing, and then we'll listen to the public's input after that. Everyone understand that? Okay? And let's try to move this. We've got quite a few people that want to talk, so let's be cognizant of everyone's time. Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, Tim Thompson, senior planner, for the record. Before you today is an appeal of a Planning Commission action. Back on November 21st, the Planning Commission approved a special use permit to allow for 180,000 square foot big-box retailer at the Legends at Sparks Marina. On December 2nd, the item was appealed to the city council, which brings us here today. The Legends handbook was originally approved back in 2006. The handbook contemplated 1.3 million square feet of retail. To date, we're probably close to about half of that out there, excluding this proposed project. The original site plan contemplated that there would be a luxury motor coach dealership at this particular location. However, the developer has come in to propose the big-box retailer, which is Walmart. The purpose behind the special use permit was based on a clause in the handbook, which says, "The approval of any special use permit required for any project not included on the approved plan may require additional street improvements beyond the limits of the development to handle project-specific projections of increased traffic identified by the traffic study included with the special use permit." Essentially, the retail component is a permitted use in this development. Had this location contemplated a big-box retailer, we would not be here, nor would a special use permit have been required. Simply because the original site plan showed that this would be a luxury motor coach dealership, and now the desire is to move a retailer into that location, the issue becomes what traffic, specifically traffic concerns, are raised by the addition of this particular retailer in this particular location. The original traffic study that was completed contemplated again this being a luxury motor coach dealer. And so really, the focus of this special use permit was really to take a look at identified impacts as it pertained to the handbook, most notably the traffic. That is the sole purpose behind this special use permit. Again, the retail use is a permitted use. As I mentioned, one of the most significant concerns was traffic. I can tell you that this application was submitted in September of last year. Prior to that, back in about April of 2012, staff initially met with the developer to start working on the scope of a traffic analysis. That traffic analysis has been vetted by the city, by the Regional Transportation Commission, and -- and there's been a great amount of time spent on the traffic analysis, which was originally completed in October of last year, and staff reviewed that analysis. One thing that you'll note in the traffic analysis is that very minimal improvements were suggested by the traffic study. However, in looking at the retailer and, again, vetting the development amongst staff, it became evident that further improvements would need to be made to the road network in the vicinity. As part of that scoping process, there was a lot of discussion about where would the traffic be coming from. It was determined that the bulk of the traffic would be coming from the north and from the -- and from the west, and not from the interstate, as originally contemplated in the original traffic analysis. Based on that, it was determined that Marina Gateway and Prater would be the intersection or the direction that folks would travel to get to this particular site. Therefore, staff required that Marina Gateway Drive be widened from its current two-lane configuration to the four-lane configuration that is being proposed. Additionally, there will be intersection improvements at Marina Gateway and East Lincoln, as well as Marina Gateway and East Prater Way. There will be minor improvements made to the intersection of McCarron and Prater as well. Another question is the roundabout, particularly the large roundabout. As we all know, during the holidays, there's a lot of traffic. I'm not sure it matters where you go, whether it be Meadowwood Mall or the Legends, there's a lot of traffic, a lot of folks trying to get in and out of the project, and so you see -- you see some backups there. The -- in going through the traffic analysis and looking at the roundabouts, it was determined that to improve the large roundabout now by adding additional lanes would actually be more detrimental to the project. One of the problems with roundabouts is people go into them too fast. And while some people -- some people believe that they're confusing, and they very well may be, but people go into them too fast, and so by increasing the capacity of that large roundabout could potentially increase the speed and actually be detrimental to the functioning of the roundabout. The overall traffic analysis did not show that this project in particular was a determining factor in requiring that roundabout to be modified in any way. The original -- or the way that staff is moving forward with this is the developer will be coming back with a handbook amendment that addresses specifically the large roundabout, and if and when improvements are going to be made. But we could not directly tie it to this particular project because the study showed that it had no impact or minimal impact. Another improvement will be the completion of Windsurfer Drive. As you, I'm sure, are all aware, Windsurfer Drive is the road located directly east of the Marina Villa's apartments. That road is -- has not been completed. It's an unimproved road. The road will be improved by the applicant, by the developer. In this particular case, it'll be improved from East Lincoln Way all the way down to the -- what road is that? Down to the Harbor Cove subdivision, the homes there. There will be no parking permitted on Windsurfer Drive. The road will be narrowed. The first portion of the road will be used for truck traffic. The trucks will enter from East Lincoln onto Windsurfer and then immediately enter into the development. Circulation was also identified as a concern. The site plan showed a direct flow from the intersection of Marina Gateway and East Lincoln right into the front of the store. And as I'm sure we can all attest to, there are a lot of pedestrian vehicular conflicts when you have situations like that, particularly this use, which generates a lot of pedestrian traffic entering the store, and to have that conflict where the bulk of your traffic comes into the center. And so staff worked with the developer to modify that, the entrance into the project. So the entrance that you'll see here is similar to the entrance that you have that's located at the Walmart on Second and Glendale there, across from the Grand Sierra Resort. Loading docks. The rear of the building will face the apartments. There is a minimum setback from the property line, as well as a setback from the nearest residential structure, which the project meets. The handbook already includes language that limits the delivery hours from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., which means from 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., there should be no deliveries, no truck idling, anything of that nature. It is important that the residents know this because if there is a violation, it's important that they notify the city so that we can investigate and take the appropriate action. In the time that Legends has been open, however, I am unaware of any delivery hour issues related to the project as a whole. Because of the location of this particular area of the project, noise generating maintenance such as snow removal or parking lot sweeping is limited to those daytime and evening hours as well. The architecture of the project, again, must meet the requirements of the handbook and be similar to the architecture that exists out there today. Generally speaking, the exterior materials comprise about 65% of rock, stone, and the other percentage would be stucco. Conditions in the special use permit require that the developer provide sufficient access for pedestrian and bikes onto the project site, that there be bike racks, that the business enter into an employee trip reduction program agreement with the RTC. And then lighting. With -- similar to the rest of the project, there will be a photometric plan that is submitted with the site improvement permit that will look at the impact of lighting. What you'll see in this particular portion of the project is what you see in the rest of the project. We're shooting for 4.5 minimum average candle watts on the lighting, which would be similar to the existing Walmart out on Pyramid Highway, as far as brightness goes, so you won't be able to perform surgery out there, but it will be safe. As far as the findings go, when approving a special use permit, we look at five findings, the first being the compatibility with the city's master plan. This project as a whole does meet the policies and goals set forth in the city's master plan, and I think this project is just an extension of that. The second finding is compatibility with the existing neighborhood. Again, when this project was originally approved back in 2006, all of this was taken into consideration, even though, I think, from a staff perspective, we knew this project was fluid from the get-go, and there's probably been hundreds, if not thousands, of site plans that have been floated around out there. So this project is constantly shifting and moving, and so to allow for as much flexibility as possible, the handbook was written the way it was written to allow certain uses over the entire project, and then really just focus on the development standards and the impacts of that development, and I think that's what we're doing here with this use permit. But the second finding is compatibility with the existing and surrounding properties. And again, this is not uncommon. Again, the Walmart in Spanish Springs, directly adjacent to residential, so this is not an uncommon situation. Findings Three and Four require that we look at the impairment of natural resources, as well as the need for affordable housing. Both of those findings were, again, considered when you look at the overall development of the Legends project. I would point out that although the Marina area plan is not a part of the city's master plan any longer, that there were some provisions in there that required, or that there were some goals that called for some additional residential within that Marina area, it is hopeful that some of those vacant properties along Marina Gateway Drive will build out into some additional residential as well. PD -- or I'm sorry, SP Five, the fifth finding is that we look at identifying and mitigating any potential impacts, in particular, traffic. The applicant is also required to meet any other requirement of the city, whether it be engineering, building, planning, fire. And then the last finding is that it was noticed, according to Nevada or V statutes, which it was. Based on these findings, staff did recommend that the Planning Commission approve this item. And again, at the November 21st Planning Commission meeting, by a vote of six to one, the Planning Commission did, in fact, approve this project. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, before we get into questions and deliberating, I think Mr. Smith has a statement he would like to read or make.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because Walmart is a direct competitor of my employer, I believe the Nevada ethics in government law precludes me from casting a vote on this measure. Although I do not believe that Scolari's would retaliate against me due to a vote supporting the special use permit, and I do not believe Walmart will accuse me of bias as a result of a vote opposing the special use permit, after consulting with the city attorney's office, I believe the prudent course of action in this situation is recusal. As such, I will be abstaining from this Agenda Item. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, questions? Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, Tim, can you, just for everybody, tell us who did the traffic study and how we ended up with that firm doing our traffic study?
The developer --
Tim, I'm just going to interrupt you a little bit. I just noticed that there are quite a few people in the audience who are struggling to hear, so I'm going to ask you to try to speak up just a little bit more. I know we've got mics, and I know we've got assistance, but if you can try to project just a little bit more, I think that would be helpful.
The developer has the ability to choose who they would like to perform the traffic analysis, and in this particular case, the developer chose Hales Engineering, who did perform the analysis. However, staff met quite extensively with the engineer to go over the scoping of the study itself, to ensure that -- of the study itself to ensure that everything that we believe needed to be addressed was addressed in the study. So, although the, the developer chose the engineer who performed the study and, and paid for that, the city was very heavily involved in the scoping of that analysis. And to reiterate, the analysis actually came back and showed, again, very minimal improvements required based on the, the traffic. However, it was staff's opinion that, that in this case, most notably Marina Gateway Drive needed to be widened to the four lanes to accommodate the traffic.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
So...
I think this might be working.
Okay, good. So, could you just take us and the audience through? So, we received, obviously, a lot of letters and a lot of correspondence, but one of the pieces of correspondence specifically addressed whether or not there was evidence to find the findings. And so, and particularly said that they felt that there was the need for third-party evidence to support the findings. And I have relatively limited experience with service unit or special use permits because there have been so few in my term, but I would like to just go through the process that, A, does a service or a special, special use permit require third-party evidence to make the findings? And then, secondly, if not, what, what is the evidence that you use to make those findings? It's not just the word of the developer, is it?
No, it isn't, Ms. Ready. The, there is no requirement for third-party review. The, the applicant, the developer, is responsible for demonstrating to the city that, that, that they've met our requirements. In the case of traffic, and, you know, perhaps Mr. Erickson could probably better address this than, than I, but the, the city has standards and requirements that must be met. And as, as your staff, we are your professionals. We are, we, we, we have the ability to look at this data and analyze it and make a recommendation based off of that data. And in the case of traffic, there are numerous standards that must be met. And, and so, this isn't a situation where the developer comes in and, you know, shows us a traffic analysis and, and we accept it. And, you know, again, you know, we worked very closely with them right from the get-go, even before this special use permit application was submitted. There was a traffic analysis that was already scoped and, and being worked on. And through those meetings, it was essentially agreed upon between city staff and the developer and their representatives that these were the factors that, that would be used in moving forward with the traffic analysis. And the perfect example of that is the, the trip distribution. Where are the trips going to be coming from? And so, sitting in a room with RTC, with NDOT, with city staff, with the developer and, and their professional engineer, we came to the conclusion that this is what we were gonna use. And so, the traffic study was based off of, of that, that data. So, this isn't a case where we're just accepting somebody's word. And, and again, technically speaking, the report came back with very minimal improvements were necessary. But in staff's opinion, based on who the tenant was, we didn't believe that that was adequate, as well as the fact that Marina Gateway Drive was constructed through a special assessment district and that we felt that there was some responsibility on our part to try and maintain that capacity that the property owners who participated in that special assessment district had invested.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else before we ask the appellant to come up? So, we kinda act like a third party, do we not? You have the developer, you have the person that gets the report, and then we review it.
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else on public comment? Or questions, I'm sorry, not public comment. Okay, is Mr. Russell here? Come on down, sir. Just give your name for the record and then give us your appeal.
Okeydoke. Michael Russo, I live in Wingfield Springs. I appreciate it, Honorable Mayor, for having me sit down here in front of all of these folks here. A little bit of my history, I've been in Sparks now, my family, my wife, my two children, my golden retriever moved here four years ago. The first thing that we did when we came to Sparks, as we drove up from California, was we stopped at the Marina. The golden retriever was very happy. We went out, he spent hours at the dog park there. You know, that was one of our selling signs. We came up to Sparks not knowing if this is where we were gonna move, if this is where we were gonna live, but that kinda sealed the deal. We loved the, the shopping there, the Legends, all of the shops in through there. Like I said, the, the park was amazing, the two-mile walk around the Marina, just visually, everything was, was really cool. We enjoyed it. I come from 20 years plus living in Florida where Walmarts went up on every corner. When they went up in Florida on all those towns and communities, you, you just saw devastation. You, you saw, you know, mom and pops, you saw all the rest of the businesses go under. You saw what they brought to the communities in the way of low wages, low benefit type jobs. And I know that they always tout that they pay $12.81. That's full-time work. Very few of their actual employees are full-time. Majority of Walmart employees are part-time. But that's really not truly the issue here. There, we have a Sparks, you don't have to go to Florida. You can drive up Pyramid. Here in Sparks, we have a Walmart right there on Pyramid. You can drive down Los Altos, you can drive down Disk and see all the businesses that have been affected by the big box that we call Walmart. And I drove past there today, and I bet it's probably, you know, north of 20 stores that are closed on that Los Altos and Disk corridor there. That's the sad reality of what this is gonna bring to our community. We love this area, we're proud to live here, we're very invested, involved in this community. I have a son who's going through his Eagle Scout, I have a daughter that plays, you know, softball, she's traveling, my wife works for the county. We're invested in this community as much as anybody possibly can. We're proud to be Sparks residents, we're here, we're not going anywhere. When we heard that there was gonna be a Walmart here, it just, it made the, you know, what left of my hair on the back of my neck stand up, realizing that we don't need this here. We don't need this in Sparks, we have it. You can go three miles up the road from the Marina and go to Pyramid, you can go three or four miles down the road to, toward the airport, crossing the Grand Sierra. If those folks wanna shop at Walmart, we have a Target there. I'm not here to support Target or any of the other stores, I just think we already have what we need in that area. The gentleman that spoke before me said that there was some preliminary things, talk about more residences being built there, that would be ideal. The IMAX theater that's going in there is amazing, I can't wait for that to open up, my kids to enjoy that. Those are the types of businesses, and that's the type of community I think Sparks should be, and I'm hoping that it will continue to be. In essence, that's my appeal to this.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Russell? Any questions? Okay, I'm gonna open the... What's that? Yeah. Does the applicant have any, anything? And I think we have, Mr. Kerrigan has a question for the applicant. But I'm gonna open the public comment, so you can comment under that document. Let me know what your question is, Mike.
Yeah, for the applicant, I just wanted to know what, what's the estimated gross of the Walmart per month?
Hi, I'm Amelia McClear, Public Affairs Director for Walmart in Nevada. Specific to your question, that's confidential information that, that we don't share out. But I, I will tell you, we've mapped it, and that store is about 4.8 miles to the closest Walmart. So, we've heard from customers and residents who wanna be able to shop and work closer to their home on the east side of the, the community. Folks who are traveling on the freeway there, who are stopping into the Legends to shop at the other stores, would also like to visit with us. We've done community outreach with the neighbors there adjacent to the store. Folks are supportive. I have a few other remarks to make.
Well, let me ask another question. What does a Walmart make on Pyramid Highway? Because that's public information, because you come out every year with your, your staff. Because we get it every ti- we get it every year up here on who, which companies make the most.
Yeah, I mean...
Okay, so, can anybody in here tell me what Walmart's supposed to make? I'm just trying to figure out the, the sales tax that's gonna be generated.
Sure. And I, I would have to defer to city staff on what kinda revenues they see from that store.
I believe it was 120 million sales last year on Pyramid Highway.
I'm, I'm not aware.
Okay, so we'll use 120, is that a good? Can anybody dispute 120 million? Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, then immediately you'll have a chance to speak in the public comment, so...
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Russo, staff, the developer? Okay. I'm gonna open the public comment. As I call your name up, I will call one name and then I'll call a second name, so be ready to come on up. Each of you will have three minutes to speak your piece. Try not to go over the same thing 15 times. If you've got something new, we would appreciate it. If you wanna fortify what somebody else said, that's fine, but let's try to move through this and make this public comment as, as good as we can. So, we'll start out with Aaron Corth, followed by Robert Charleboy. Aaron? And if you don't want to speak, just tell me whether you oppose or approve of the, of the appeal. Go ahead, Aaron.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Aaron Corth, I'm here in behalf of Shields. Just a couple of comments I wanted to make about things. We're in support of Walmart coming to our area. Couple of reasons, the community would benefit from it, from increased traffic to the complex. Other stores in the area would benefit from it as well, due to hiring more people, increase of customer traffic to the development. Since we opened in 2008, every store that's opened since we started as a standalone after that, we've seen increased traffic, increased sales, allowing us to increase in employment and benefiting the community as well. So, just on behalf of Shields, we're in favor of it.
Okay. Thanks, Aaron. Is that it?
That's it.
Robert Charleboy, followed by Aaron Sims. Robert? Did I get the name right?
Pretty close.
Okay.
And I'm in the minority on this one. I think it's a good idea that the store be approved. And my feeling is we have enough at 6.9 unemployment, we need employment. Yes, maybe minimum wage for a lot of the positions, but jobs are important for the area. They talk about it causing lots of traffic. Well, if the store isn't going to be successful, there will be no traffic. But Walmart seems to think it will be successful. And, yes, we may have traffic, but it means it's a needed, a business for the area. We don't have Neiman Marcus asking us to make a change to let them come in. We do have Walmart asking. And I think the economy needs the jobs. So, I would ask that you approve the variance.
Thank you, sir. Aaron Sims, followed by Joe Gillespie. Aaron?
Good afternoon. Aaron Sims, I'm with Galaxy. IMAX, the theater that's getting ready to go in. I'm here just on behalf of Galaxy that we are in favor of the Walmart to come in. Being a new business, we are really looking forward to any more new businesses coming in, kinda to piggyback off the gentleman that just spoke. More, more traffic is always good. People coming to the theater might see that, see the Walmart and vice versa. And also, as the Shields representative said, jobs. I offered five positions to assistant managers yesterday, and four of them were unemployed. So, from a job standpoint, I think would be outstanding.
Okay, thank you, sir. Joe Gillespie, followed by Gary Duhon.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Joe Gillespie. I'm here representing the Popeye's Restaurant at the Legends, and Luther Mac and myself feel very confident that the, the addition of the Walmart will only benefit the center, the additional or modified traffic pattern that they're suggesting, we think, will make better access to the, to the whole center as a whole, as well as Walmart's ability to attract other retail to the area. So, we're very confident, and we're looking forward to them as being neighbors out there.
Thank you, Joe. Gary Duhon, followed by Amelia McClear.
Good afternoon. Gary Duhon, representing Sparks Legends Development. I don't have much time, so what I'd like to do is reemphasize something Mr. Thompson said that I think is very important to keep in mind here today. And that's really the scope of what we're trying to do. As all of you very well know, this project was approved in 2006 and in, in 2007 after very extensive review and analysis. You know, myriad of evidence was introduced, the governor's office was involved, and this body approved the project as it was, including the big box retailers, that included Walmart. Now, as such, Walmart has a permitted use in the project. I'm asking you to please keep in mind the sole focus of our, our discussion today, although I know you have concerns broader than this, and I'll talk about that in a moment, is that the Walmart is being relocated, as Mr. Thompson said, but for the relocation, it'd be a permitted use, we'd do a site plan review and, and they'd pull a building from it, after making sure that Walmart had complied with everything appropriate. So, that's the scope of our review here today. The scope is what are the impacts, the additional newer different impacts that are caused by the relocation of Walmart? It's not a, a complete reanalysis of everything having to do with the project or everything having to do with, with Walmart. The legal brief that was submitted a couple of days ago suggested we have to go back and do a complete economic study. That was done. That was decided, all that was done six years ago. We shouldn't review or consider the suitability of a Walmart for this project. That was decided by you in 2006 and 2007. What we need to do is exactly what the staff did, and they did a very good job at this. They, they take, took a lot of time, did a very detailed analysis of all the impacts caused by the relocation. That's the scope of the review. We went through traffic and many other things, they got outside expert opinions, they used their substantial expertise in planning and engineering and traffic and everything else. They met with RTC, they met with NDOT, they met with the neighbors. And as you can see, there are a lot of neighbors here, including neighbors directly adjacent who support it today. Based on that very careful consideration, they recommended to the planning commission that this project be approved, that it's suitable, meets all the requirements of the handbook, the code, and everything else that's applicable, the intent, everything else. The planning commission agreed. Now, we asked that you agree and, and approve this project. Now, notwithstanding the limited scope, the appropriate scope of, of this analysis today, we also understand that you have a lot of concerns about the project. And there are a lot of concerns out here in the audience today. We have the entire team down here to answer any and all questions that we possibly can about the project, about Walmart, about the impact on, on, on the community as a result of the relocation, and anything else you would like. I'd like to thank you for your time, and I'd like to thank the staff for all the hard work that they put in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. Do you have one comment? Go ahead, Mr. Kerrigan.
Yeah, Gary, I just wanna point out, thank you for bringing it up that in 2006 this was approved as a, as a, a use. But also, I wanna, I want everybody in the audience to know that in 2006, this project was also supposed to be 50% plus tourists, okay? And that was found in 2006, too.
Understood. And unfortunately, we've all lived through what is a recession most of the country and an absolute depression here in real Sparks. And I, I think we're all trying to do the best we can, and, and I'm hopeful that the, the interest that Walmart shows will continue to parlay into additional improvements. It's not what we want, it's not what we hope for, but it's, it's, it's something that we're moving for.
Thank you, sir. Yes, go ahead.
My, thanks, I'll come out. I just, I just wanna clarify something with Mr. Dunn real quick, is that the original project's approved in 2006, Walmart was in that project?
The big box retailers were approved specifically, and, and retailers of this size were, were approved. Now, whether Walmart, I don't recall that Walmart actually appears in it, but the, the number of, of big box retailers, including the size, scope, and impact of Walmart, was included and is a permitted use.
If I remember 2006 correctly, that the other big box retailer was J.C. Penney's that was approved in the package, is that correct?
You know, it'd be better if I bring up somebody with better historical history to answer some of these questions.
It's my recollection for the five years that this project is that Walmart was not approved in 2006, that it was forced out of the package, that it wasn't gonna be, this council didn't want it in 2006.
That's not consistent with my understanding, but again...
Okay, I just wanna double check to see, because we'll be asking staff to bring that forward.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, Amelia McClair, followed by Stephen Mollath.
Hi there. Amelia McClair, again with Walmart. And there were a couple of things brought up in the comments prior to us coming that I wanted to correct. One was the whole Buy American question, so I wanted to point out that last year, we spent more than a hundred and fifty million dollars on merchandise and services with suppliers and vendors here in Nevada. And as a result of Walmart's relationship with these suppliers, we support more than ten thousand supplier jobs in the state of Nevada. Some local examples here include Family First Pharmaceuticals in Reno, Bonanza Produce in Sparks, Ronnie Plastics in Reno's, and the Relief Products in Reno. Also, questions around our jobs and benefits. We actually, contrary to what the gentleman said, are... It's important to note that we employ a majority full-time associates. Actually, the majority of our competitors do not, and they employ a majority part-time. We employ a majority full-time, and our wages and benefits typically meet or exceed those offered by a majority of our competitors. In Nevada, our full-time average hourly wage is thirteen fifty per hour, and figure we voluntarily share in every state where we do business. We provide a corporate match of up to six percent in our 401K program. And at Walmart, you can climb the ladder from stocker to a department manager to a store manager and beyond. About seventy-five percent of our store management started as hourly associates, and they earn between fifty thousand and a hundred and seventy thousand a year. Depending on the time of year, there are between fifteen thousand and fifty thousand job postings at Walmart. Last year, we received more than five million applications to come work in our stores, and of those hired last year, twenty percent were rehires, meaning they worked for Walmart, left, but then came back because they wanted to work for us again. And according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the average turnover rate for the retail industry is forty-three point six percent. The average turnover rate for Walmart U.S. is thirty-seven percent. So we keep and we retain our associates because they like the jobs and the benefits that they're offered. In fact, we have folks here today who are going to be speaking later on, who work at our sports store, and they can speak firsthand to that. Thanks.
Thanks, Amelia. Stephen Mollath, followed by Barbara... Oops. Followed by William Canal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Stephen Mollath. I'm the attorney for Walmart. To answer Mr. Schmidt's question, I had occasion just to look at the staff report that was presented in November on this case. On page four, the last paragraph, "Staff reports," which is consistent with what my recollection is, "at project inception, both Walmart and Target were slated to construct stores within the Legends project. However, Walmart decided not to construct the store within the development at that time. As a result, Target moved to the Walmart location and low subsequently backfill the original Target location." So it was contemplated right at the beginning, according to staff.
I just want to make sure it was... We're very clear. It was contemplated, but not approved.
Well, I...
It was... Did not make the final vote package that came in front of the city council in two thousand and six.
I'm not so sure that that's correct.
And I would like to ask staff then to...
Okay.
If they could bring me the...
Staff could clarify that.
Bring me the vote in two thousand and six that shows a packet with Walmart inside of it. Thank you.
Okay. I'm not going to spend too much time, because Mr. Duhon laid out factually and legally what the various positions are, but I think the most important thing is that we have an ordinance twenty-three seventy, which was put into place in September nineteenth of two thousand and seven, which recognized all the items that Mr. Duhon said, the tax issues, the resolution of the governor, the tourism, all the issues that were brought up in the letter of opposition from the appellant, were really taken care of back in two oh seven by virtue of the resolution. And that resolution contained a number of items relative to the approval of the project, and there was a resolution in there that talked about a preponderance resolution found by this council. So I think that's very important to know, that, you know, these issues, while certainly their issues should have been brought up back in two thousand and six and two thousand and seven, when the project was approved, when the PUD was approved, and when you go through regional plan conformance. So those are issues that really are past. The focus certainly is traffic mitigation and conditions, and I think staff has done a good job on that. We're here to answer any questions that you may have, but we'd ask that the appeal be rejected and project approved, consistent with the Planning Commission approval.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mollath. William Canal, is that correct? Followed by Barbara Williams? Am I pronouncing the name wrong?
Mayor, William Cannon.
Okay, C-A-N-N-O, yeah, okay. Looked like a U on the end, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You'll have to forgive me, I'm Italian.
Had an I at the end, it'd be an Italian.
Exactly. All right, go ahead, sir.
William Cannon from Sparks. I just have a couple of questions about this project. Is this a Starbonds-funded project?
No.
No, it's not going to be?
No.
Oh, okay. Are all the Starbonds current in Legends?
As far as I know, yes.
Correct, John?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Barbara Williams? Am I pronouncing this one wrong, too? Sixteen oh nine Palmwood Drive?
Sorry.
Yeah, maybe I better just go with the dresses. Followed by Lee B-E-R-N-S, is that correct? All right. Go ahead.
Barbara Welling.
Barbara is right, okay, good.
Sparks residence. I'm just kinda here in concern for what has been already said the first couple of speakers, how Walmart does not pay a living wage, and I would like to know the percentage of their full-time versus part-time. Also, we've just recently read in the paper through the holidays how that we subsidize some of their employees with our food stamp program because they do not make a living wage. Also, there's been many legal issues of discrimination with the employment of Walmart. So, some of these things, I think, need to be addressed, what type of an employee Walmart is, and do we want another one in Sparks? I say no.
Thank you. Uh, one thing, please hold the applause. You know, we know there's a lot of you here that are not in favor of this. Just hold your applause and respect everyone that's speaking, please. Go ahead, Mr. Kerrigan.
Okay, the question Mr. Cannon asked was, are Starbonds going to build Walmart? And the answer is no, is that correct? Now, my question is, is the sales tax going to pay off the Starbonds from Walmart?
Yes.
And the answer is?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Burns, followed by Dr. Paul Davis.
Thank you, Mayor Martini, and distinguished council members. I am a Sparks resident. My name is Lee Burns. I live in Wingfield Springs, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the construction of it. Notwithstanding the fact that we're talking about tax revenue to the community, and I won't reiterate some of the comments of other speakers today, what will really happen in reality is a shift of tax revenue from one retailer to the other, when you see loss of sales in the Ace Hardware Stores and other small merchants trying to compete with Walmart. So we're not going to see this overwhelming reservoir of new tax revenue for the city. And for a lot of reasons, I oppose it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Paul Davis, followed by Lorraine Ellingwood. I know I got your name right.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Council person. I'm Dr. Paul Davis. I'm professor of government at UNLV and TMCC. I'm one of the longest residents at the Sparks Marina Home Development. I believe I was the first or second homeowner. The land for this proposed site has been, for many years, just been a pile of dirt that does not generate tax revenue for the city of Sparks and is an eyesore. This will change with the establishment of Walmart in this area, and an additional three hundred jobs, and increased tax revenue for the city of Sparks, which is obviously badly needed. The establishment of Walmart will be very convenient and useful for the residents of the Marina District. It will again establish the Marina District as a home to many diverse shopping establishments for the convenience of its residents. The opposition to this development is based on their dislike of Walmart management and the claim of poor pay and benefits for its employees. I don't like groups dictating to me what I should like or not like. Let the free market decide. Nobody is putting a gun to people's heads, saying you must work for Walmart, or you must shop at Walmart. If people wish to shop and work for Walmart, then they should have the opportunity to do so, if they wish. And speaking of benefits, I submit to the council an article by Washington Examiner reporter named Richard Pollock, printed on January seventh, two thousand and fourteen, that states that a comparison of the Walmart health plan with the Obamacare health plan clearly shows that Walmart's health program is much more affordable and provides significantly better access to high-quality medical care than Obamacare. So I submit this to the council. And I was just noticing the flyer that's been going around. I'd like to make a few points on the flyer, counterpoints to that. A little more pedestrian traffic at the Legends is good for all the other stores as well. The same people who shop at Target and TJ Maxx also shop at Walmart and are already shopping at the Legends. Complaints about traffic and noise about making living in the Marina area virtually impossible was heard previously about during the buildings of the Legends, and as far as I'm concerned, that did not occur. I see on the flyer, it says it will increase commute time on I-80, which I think is ludicrous. The entire Legends is accessible on I-80, and there's been very little mention of prolonged commuter time on Y-80, I-80 being a problem. The last point of Walmart destroying mom and pop stores in the Reno-Sparks area seems odd to me. Based on this premise, that since we have currently six Walmarts in the Reno-Sparks area, then by extrapolation of this argument, there should no longer be any mom and pop stores left, which is clearly not the case. So in my conclusion, I strongly support the development of this project and believe that the citizens of Sparks should have the opportunity to decide with their feet whether the Sparks Marina Walmart will be successful or not, and not be held hostage by a group of people who object to this development. I like the fact that Legends provides the type of stores for all segments of our society. In short, I believe in the principles of a free market and strongly urge the council to endorse this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Uh, Lorraine Ellington? Ellingwood, I'm sorry. You're opposed? Okay, next is Helen Renteria? Helene?
Helene.
Okay, Helene.
Not Helen.
Followed by Barbara Stone.
Good afternoon. I've lived here for twenty years from Southern California. I am totally appalled and opposed for another Walmart. In a lot of the magazines I read, Fortune, others, Walmart and Zillow are two of the worst companies to work for, both in the same part in Arkansas. We don't need any more of those stores here. A lot of the stores have closed, the mom and pop stores, for that reason. A lot of the markets... Walmart doesn't cater... Well, Walmart... Yeah, they don't take pride in who they hire or train. The employees are not trained well. They don't help the customers. And it's just an eyesore. We don't need it. And we don't need any more of those big stores. We have like six between Reno and Sparks. So I'm totally against. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Stone? Followed by William Underwood?
Thank you very much. I'll give you back here. I have hearing aids, thanks to Obamacare, but they don't work in here very well. I am so against another Walmart, it's almost unbelievable. The reason being is, if you drive anywhere in Marshall County, in Lion County, anywhere you want to go, Douglas, Carson, there's Walmarts everywhere. They want to put everybody out of business, drive around and look at the hundreds of buildings that are closed, because of all the little places that have been put out of business. We don't have, in this country, any integrity anymore. Walmart doesn't care about its people. I know a lady that was fired because she called in, her daughter was sick, and I took her to the... Drove her and her daughter to the hospital, and her manager said she didn't call in, and I was there. And they fired her the next day as a no-call, no-show. That is so wrong. This kind of stuff happens a lot. But what bothers me is everything that is so... They're closed. We've got a terrible look in this state. I'm a senior citizen, of course, and I'm a Nevada native, born and raised. I can see what's going on here and know what's happened all of these years. I appreciate what Mr. Russo did. I wouldn't have known about this without this. But we sure do not need a hundred and eighty-five thousand square foot store with a motor coach park there. What are they going to close? They closed North Town. They weren't happy with that. They closed these others in little cities because they're not making the revenue they want. They tell you that they're paying good wages, but they don't know what the truth is, and haven't. And I don't care how much they come up with stuff. I wouldn't believe anybody from Walmart if I was the next thing to Jesus Christ. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, William Underwood, followed by Deborah Drum?
Good afternoon. Thanks for the opportunity to speak for the council. I'm William Underwood. I live in the vistas. I've been here for about fourteen years, so I've seen a lot of rapid development in the area. And a lot of it's been favorable, and I've enjoyed watching the community develop. Personally, and this is just, you know, an opinion matter, I think it's excessively redundant to build another Walmart in the area. I don't think it plays to the necessity of diversity for the consumer. And I think it reduces the options they have when they go out to shop. Convenience is a matter of personal choice. If people really want something when they go out to spend their money, they'll travel as far as it takes to get the items they prefer to purchase.
He's driving.
Yeah, I know. You know, from my personal point of view, I find it annoying to have to drive all the way across town to Reno to go to the Apple Store, to Whole Foods, and other quality merchants that I prefer to see over here. I've talked to some of these people when I go into their stores to see if there are any potentials for them, moving even satellite retail outlets over here, and they seem to be kind of up in the air about it. They say they would like to, and I don't know what's before the council and the Planning Commission, or those kind of things, but as a personal, you know, preference, I would prefer to have some of those stores here, so they would be convenient for my shopping purposes, for my family members and neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. My comment is, all they have to do is ask if they want to be in Sparks. We'll invite them right in. Deborah Drum, followed by Sharon Taylor?
Hi, my name's Deborah Drum. I've been in Sparks since nineteen ninety-seven, and Reno prior to that. I wish that whatever was evaluated in two thousand and six and two thousand and seven could be reevaluated now, since Nevada was one of the hardest hurt states when recession, and how everything crashed totally... In my opinion, makes everything different today than it was back then. I am going to quote some things I found in a PBS article, and I'm sure the date said September of two thousand and thirteen. Walmart employs more people than any other company in the United States outside of the federal government, yet the majority of its employees with children live below the poverty line. The salary for full-time employees, they call them associates, is six dollars to seven fifty an hour for a twenty-eight to forty-hour week. This rate of pay places even full-time employees with families below the poverty line, with the majority of employees' children qualifying for free lunch at school. Consider that fact. These free lunches, the free lunches that Walmart workers qualify for, amounts to a form of corporate welfare, as a taxpayer subsidizes the low salaries so these kids can have school lunch. And one-third of the employees are part-time, limited to less than twenty-eight hours, and are not eligible for... eligible for any benefits. I read where the health care benefit premium costs Walmart employees twice as much as most other employers provided health care. The Forbes Top 10 list of wealthy Americans has a Walmart family member in position six, seven, eight, and nine, each with a net worth of between $33 and $35 billion. This company is second largest only to ExxonMobil. And we are discussing whether or not they should get a special use permit to construct 186,000-square-foot store using Star Bonds. You did kind of clarify Star Bonds. So 75% of the sales taxes paid buying at the Walmart go to subsidize its existence. I think it is mind-bending that we're even discussing this. Reno is finally recognizing the value and importance and the source of pride that small businesses create in a community. And why not Sparks? Why can't Sparks do the same? How many times during our recession did I read in the paper about the many small businesses doing all they could to hang on to their employees who they truly valued? If these businesses cut hours, it was so everyone could keep their job, not for the bottom line to please the stockholders. Big-box stores are not the solution to decades of poor tax policy. With low wages, threats, intimidations, Walmart is not a good steward of any community. And finally, there is the traffic. Legends is already so poorly designed, there are huge backups during busy times, and in a couple of years, Sparks Boulevard will be used to get on that new southeast, or whatever its name, connector. It will be gridlocked. And regardless of what Walmart says about not closing an existing store and leaving yet another enormous empty hulk of a useless building, it is their history which speaks the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Taylor, followed by Natalie Sherrick?
Excuse me, my lens fell out.
Uh-oh.
I'm a native, 75 years I have lived here. I was born in Reno, but I've lived a good part of my life in Sparks. And I take very big pride in Sparks. Reno has the summit, which is a fancy mall. Some of them are high-priced, some of them aren't, but it's beautifully laid out, and it's a nice place to go. I prefer our Legends. Our Legends is our summit. It should be kept above Walmart and the rest of them. It should be kept as a very special place in Sparks. We have a lot of people from Reno that I know that come here and shop because they have nice things to say about our Legends. We start letting these cheap retail stores, and I'm one that does shop at Walmart off and on. And it's true, they're cheap. Their merchandise is cheap. It's sad, but as a senior, I don't have much choice. Now, the Galleria was one of the most beautiful shopping centers for Sparks. I live up off of Los Altos in the vistas. We were very proud of the Galleria. Walmart came in, little by little, each store started closing down. If you've driven out there and really looked at the stores that are closed down, gone, some of them moved out here, but not very many, it's just really sad. We don't need another Walmart in this area. We've got one on Glendale, which belongs to Reno. We've got one out here, which they don't even keep stocked right. Then most of the time you go in there, they're out of things because they don't hire enough help. So I'm just completely against it, and I hope you all really think about it and what the Legends and the Marina means to us in Sparks, and that we want to keep it really nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Natalie Sherrick?
I'm passing.
Pardon me?
I'm passing.
Okay. Nick Berenka?
Gina, is she in favor or opposed?
In favor or opposed? I'm sorry.
Natalie?
Natalie, were you in favor or opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Nick?
Yes, Gina.
Did I get it right?
Yes, Berenka, yes.
Thought I recognized you. Followed by Thomas Ferantino. Okay, go ahead.
Hi Gina, how are you and all the councilmen? I'm the store manager at the Walmart that she was just speaking about in Spanish Springs. I was born and raised here in Reno, Nevada. Lived here all my life. I did spend some time down in Gardinerville for about 12 years, and then I was back up here. Some of what I'm hearing makes me sad about my store. But the reason we're here is about another Walmart. My store currently sits on Pyramid, as we all know. To the right of me, there's a housing development. I have the same stipulations as the store that we are asking to come in here. I have receiving hours, can't receive before 7:00 a.m., can't receive up till 10:00 p.m. We follow those guidelines. We also make sure our trucks, on top of that, come in opposite so that they don't go near the housing to disturb them. Some of our Walmarts throughout the country do allow motorhomes and those type of vehicles to be parked on the parking lot. We do not because of that ordinance. We follow our good neighbor practices. I drive around my building every day. I make sure it's clean. I make sure it's picked up. I want our building to be presentable, as the store manager will of the new store. I'm for another store. I don't know what else to tell you. If you have any questions, I guess at the end, we will talk about those.
Okay.
Thanks.
Question, Ron, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. It was testified in the planning commission by Walmart that one of the purposes of this new store was to push your overflow business you have to this store. That was testimony given on record to the planning commission. What is the dollar amount that you anticipate moving from one store to that store?
I haven't had any analysis on that, so I can't speak intelligently about that question.
But Walmart's had analysis on how much they plan on relieving your store?
Again, if somebody gave testimony on that, I don't know what the testimony was.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thomas Ferantino, followed by Lee Tauchin?
Good afternoon. I've worked for Walmart now for approximately 10 years. I started in 2001. Went to Robert McQueen High School. Started at Walmart at 16, started me at $8 an hour in 2001. Minimum wage at the time was under $6 an hour. Since working for Walmart, I've participated in stock benefits. That has allowed me to save $1.10,000 to take a two-year trip to Korea. I also have right now a 401K that continues to grow fairly aggressively, using Walmart's 6% match. Again, I started as a cart pusher when my assistant manager, Peggy at the time, had interviewed me. She asked me how long I, she thought I'd be at Walmart, and I gave her, you know, well, maybe a year, two years, I don't know, I'm going to go to school and might be gone. Well, other than the two years I spent in Korea, I've been with Walmart the entire time. I haven't needed any government assistance programs. I'm not saying some of our associates don't absolutely, sometimes fall into the situations where they do. I'm proud to say that as an assistant manager now, you know, I've moved up, I have made in the last year numerous associates, I don't have a perfect number, full-time from part-time. It's one of those things that you show up to work, you do a job that, you know, people are wanting you there for, and they are going to pay you more money, they're going to promote you, they're going to make those things happen for you. Benefits, when the Affordable Care Act, you know, came about, it was really a blip on the screen for all of us. It really didn't affect anything. I already had benefits that qualified. I'd had benefits that qualified since I was 18 years old, and my mom can no longer afford to keep me on her health insurance. Again, I don't have any issues with Walmart. Do I wake up every day, stretch out my arms and say, yay, I got to go to work? Of course not, but I can't, you know, I don't think everybody here has that reaction when they're getting up in the morning. But I'm proud to work for Walmart. I'm proud to have the associates that I have. And sometimes people get upset about things that happen, and that's going to be true of any company. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Leah Tauchin, followed by Trey Abney?
Good afternoon. My name is Leah Tauchin with the Retail Association of Nevada, and we're in support of the approval of this special use permit. From the retail industry perspective, we are always excited to see a retailer that's going to grow and expand and make the decision to invest in this community. We believe that Sparks will see value from this expansion. For a project like this, we anticipate increased economic activity and increased sales tax revenue. There will be new jobs, and not just retail jobs. We anticipate construction work prior to the store opening and ongoing maintenance work thereafter. Additionally, residents will have convenient access to a business committed to lowering costs and prices for everyday needs, and this retailer has a culture of giving back to the communities that they serve. These are all benefits that the Retail Association is proud to support in this city, and we urge your support to allow this project to proceed. Thank you.
Thanks, Leah. Question? Ron, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you for your testimony, and I think glad to see the Retail Association involved in this. You testified that you anticipate sales tax increases. What do you anticipate next, net sales tax increase to be by this project?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Your testimony was that you anticipated increased sales tax revenue. What is that increase you anticipate?
I don't have a specific figure for you, just based on anecdotal evidence that we've seen in the past.
So the Retail Association hasn't done a financial report on this?
We did not conduct a study, no, sir.
Thank you.
Trey Abney, followed by Carol Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the record, Trey Abney, representing the 2,000 members of the Chamber of Commerce of Reno-Sparks, Northern Nevada. We support this project. And just to be clear, this is not about Walmart. We would support any business that wants to come into this community or grow and expand in this community and provide jobs and provide sales tax revenue. Respectfully, it's not this council's job to determine wage policies at the businesses within your borders. It's not this council's job to determine whether we need another private enterprise in this city. I think the consumers of Sparks and the Truckee Meadows will decide if we need another Walmart in this example, in this community. Frankly, this is a full-throated defense of free enterprise. Any business. Walmart, the smallest of the smalls, as you can imagine, Chamber of Commerce, I represent everybody, from one person working out of their home to the largest businesses in our community. We think that any business, following the law and the rules and the agreements set out by this body and other government bodies in the Truckee Meadows, should be able to fulfill their destiny to create jobs and to expand. And we've seen in the past that anchor stores in developments like this or other shopping centers can be critical to the small businesses that are also located in that center. Anchor stores like this can drive traffic to centers such as Legends and help all of the businesses around there as more people pass by their front doors and potentially walk in there. We support Walmart, again, in any business that follows the rules and wants to expand and create jobs in the city of Sparks. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Trey. Question, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Rick. Trey, I can't agree with you anything more. Honestly, it's not our job to talk about Walmart. It's not our job to talk about wages. It's not an issue. It's something on the table that we really don't have a lot that we can talk about. But would you agree with me that a job of a city council or elected government body is tax management?
Yes. With caveat, depends on what that management is.
So revenue forecasting, revenue projections, expenditures, tax shifts should all be what we're looking at today?
It's not, for the record again, Trey Abney, it's not your job to control that tax shift. You may want to look at it, but to say that Business A may come in and be competitive with Business B, that's up to the market to decide that. There may be shift or increase, and know, before you ask, I don't have any...
Sure, absolutely. We're not, you know, if three grocery stores want to go on the same corner...
Right.
They're allowed to go on the same corner. They're good to...
Right. Given due consideration requirements and all that, right.
But a tax shift, would you not think that you would have numbers on that to go ahead and decide what a tax shift was going to be? In other words, if you were going to have funds from the general fund that are going to shift over to another district that's not going to be used for police and fire, is it the city council's job to look at those numbers and analyze that and see if that tax shift is a good shift?
You can certainly look at that. I certainly don't have the numbers to help you. There are probably people better at it than me.
Okay, does anybody in the room have those numbers? Obviously not. Does anybody in the room have tax shift numbers from what's going to lead the general fund to the Star Bonds district?
I mean, I know...
If I have to lay off 35 police and fire personnel next year because of this decision today, I'd like to know it today.
But with respect, that piece of dirt is producing nothing right now.
I understand. So, but if you take from general fund to make that piece of dirt produce something for a special district that does not get paid for police, fire, and everything, you have a cost to your general fund. What is that cost? What is those decisions we're doing today? And it's obvious that a financial report is confidential, but nobody, taxpayer money's not here.
Well, it would seem then your decision is whether to leave that as a piece of dirt or put something on it. Today, you have an opportunity to put something on it, but it wouldn't just be, if that's your argument, it wouldn't just be Walmart. It could be anything you put on there.
And I'll explain the math. As we get down, I'll explain the math of why this is important. Preliminary numbers show I lay off 37 people next year. My calculations, not anybody else's, because I can't, no one did the financial report for this. $100 million project, and nobody did the financial report for it. So I'm going to throw out the math that's going to show this city lays off 37 people next year. Thank you.
Thanks, Trey. Appreciate it. Carol Miller, followed by David Dahl?
Hi, Carol Miller. So I live really close to the new Walmart. I am confident that I will be able to throw a frisbee and hit their building. Maybe I'll buy the frisbee there, I don't know. That's how close I live. Seriously, it's really close. I could probably park at my house and walk there closer, but other people will park there. Having said all that, I testified at the planning commission meeting, and I said, we the neighbors are concerned about the wall. I want to make sure that there's a tall enough wall that we're not affected. Since that, Walmart reached out to us through engineering and, I don't know, other people, and they've addressed neighborhood concerns. They met with us, gave us blueprints, gave us perspective drawings, included us in the process. So we've had an opportunity to talk about the wall, the traffic, the parking on Windsurfer Way, which is currently gravel and is going to turn into pavement, how the trucks move, how the lights are going to be from their property to our property, what the landscaping's going to look like and all of that. And they're actually willing to make changes for us because we ask for it. So I come here not just for myself, but for some of the neighbors on my street, Bill Alamo, Joe Kizinweather, and Gina Milano, all homeowners on my street. So they got through our issues, and we're really glad about that. We don't object to it at all. In fact, I reached out to a lot of other neighbors with the blueprints, and they've had the rounds of the neighborhood. I don't even know where all they went, but we have a Facebook group, and we have a pizza group, and we have an email group, and lots of people had an opportunity. As far as I know, nobody in the neighborhood is excited in the negative. People are varying from neutral to too busy to think about it, to pretty positive about Walmart coming to our neighborhood. We have talked about whether Walmart is evil or not, and some of the things that haven't been brought up yet are that Walmart has amazing logistics for produce. I think that the local area is going to have bitter raspberries if they move in. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Carol. David Dahl, followed by Don Young?
I live at 1199 Harbor Cove Court, and I have private property in the area. I live at 1199 Harbor Cove Court, and I have private property in the area. And when Walmart came before us and you, and Carol Miller just talked about the fact that they reached out to the neighbors, and I want to confirm that with all the neighbors, that I know that she gave you a true representation of how the neighborhood feels there, that is the most impacted by this. As a private property owner, I say that this is an appeal of a land issue. It should remain the appeal of a land issue. I think the revenue aspects of the city and the redevelopment agencies always have to be on your mind, and I agree with that. But the issues of traffic and noise, which are the important issues that were to be addressed in this, have been addressed, and I ask your support for the Walmart.
Thanks, David. Don Young, followed by no one else unless there's another card coming up.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Don Young. I would like to thank Red Development, and I guess I'm going to be repeating a couple of previous people. I'd like to thank them for involving the neighborhood early in the process. I am asking you to support this request and deny the appeal. Even though I too have concerns about the large increase in traffic, my primary concern is with the safety of, on East Lincoln on the north side of the Marina. Already, the law enforcement is very lax, and we have people going, I would guess easily three times the speed limit. So if we can do something with the increased traffic and maybe a little more enforcement, it would certainly help matters. But again, I would ask you to support this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up, sir. Bob?
Austin. Hi, Jim.
I had my glasses on, I couldn't recognize you. Bob Austin, welcome, Bob.
Yeah, I've been sitting here listening to this, and the biggest thing I got out of it is the taxes. Okay, these people, quote, I don't know where they're from, well, we can't tell you what we're projecting to make. We can't tell you what this is or what that is. Who cares? Or a planning guy goes, "We had their independent agency check this, check that." I guess we're the third checker, right? What'd that cost? Why are we in it? He says noise. Noise is really cool. Goes from seven, 10 o'clock at night noise. After 10 o'clock, you have to try to get an officer of the law to calm the noise. Where are you going to get them? Those guys have other important things than some guy over here with a diesel sleeper. Let's face it, they're not going to go to Walmart and watch a guy diesel, you know, when they're going to a car wreck. So otherwise, what I get out of it is, a lot of people are upset because they ain't going to pay decent wages. Okay, I've been a union carpenter 35 years. You think you're going to pay the construction workers 35 an hour? Doubt it. Okay, the gold bonds, good thing we're not going to pay for with that. You know, and most people that I know, and I've been here 50 years, that's old timers. We don't call it Walmart. It's Wall-e World, because you never know what's going to happen. You walk in there, some little kid might be shaking his leg and watch you surprise. That's happened there. You go out to any one of their stores, and you never know what's going to happen. When the other people come to town, like, "What are those guys that go out here? Gerlach? Those guys in September?"
Burning men.
The Burning Men. They're rent-a-bikes. They go in there and buy bikes and rent them and turn them back in. You know, they say they help the community. Yeah, they help the community. Over on the Indian Reservation, you know that they're on the Indian Reservation because all they have to do is pay the tax revenue to the Indians. They don't pay it to City Arena or the state of Nevada. They had the same thing going out south of town for the major cities, Ben dealers. If we let them go there, I get to tell my relatives from Montana, Michigan, all over the country now, "Hey, come to town, I'll take you to Shields, and then we'll go to Walmart." That doesn't sound something with good tourist effects. We can go to the new Walmart out there by Shields. That doesn't sound good. Want to put a hotel casino there? That was in the master plan, you know, all this master plan stuff. Let's change the master plan again. Let's put a Walmart there, let's put a Kmart there. We already got a Lowe's, maybe put a Home Depot. You know, we may as well go the whole route. Let's go and put a couple McDonald's in there, that'll compete with Popeyes, okay? Let's put all that kind of stuff in there and make it a junk place, just like all the other stuff. You got that Target lot right over here? Well, why don't they take it and extend the building? That's all I got to say.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Going once? Come on down, sir. Go ahead and give your name for the record, and then if you would fill out one of those cards afterward, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, you go.
Happy to be here, members of council. Thank you very much. My name is Curtis Montgomery. I am the owner of Buffalo Wild Wings, and have moved here recently from Phoenix into the Reno market I would have been in, but I'd love to move to Sparks, but did not due to have another store in Carson City, and where I live in South Meadows is right in the middle, so it's easy drive back and forth. But we definitely support, obviously, Walmart coming to the area here. We know traffic is going to assist us in our business and have seen it at two, I have 11 locations with my partners, and we have two Walmarts near, very near our other two locations, and they do quite well due to the traffic patterns coming from the Walmart. And we really feel that it is going to assist the community. I know that a lot of folks are talking about the tax revenue going back and forth. I know when I opened this up, I was spending a couple thousand dollars just on, you know, office supplies and things like that, and I was going to Sam's or to Costco or to Walmart in Reno, obviously, the tax revenue going to them versus that of Sparks. Two of our locations that we have in other states, we have done some co-ops with charity sponsorships with Walmart. That has been very successful, and they've been very supportive of working together on that. So again, just knowing the area, and you know, one thing that I've talked to a lot of, a lot of guests from the Sparks area with my business and so forth, and one of the things that I've heard from many folks is they don't like to leave Sparks. They like their own little community, which is fantastic. So having a Walmart, obviously, they can obviously go to Walmart here in Sparks versus going to Walmart outside of the Sparks territory. So again, Buffalo Wild Wings is in total support of Walmart coming to the area.
Thanks, Curtis. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Public hearing is closed, let's bring it back to the council.
I do have a question. I had a couple of...
Wait until I close the public hearing.
Well, it's about public comment. I had a couple of correspondents that asked specifically that the letters be read into the record. Are we going to do that?
Are they really long? I mean, if they're opposed or four, I mean, we can say they're opposed or say they're four and give a general overview?
I had at least three that were opposed. I would say that it's fair to say that the comments that were in those letters were generally reflective of some of the comments that were made here today. I don't think there's any new information there, but they did all, two of them specifically requested. I don't know that I'm going to be able to do that. Teresa, do you have, they were sent to...
If I could, the council rules provide that we note those matters for the record.
Yeah.
And...
They'll be in the record.
And that, if someone wishes to have something read, they can come to the meeting and do that, but your rules provide that letters of communication with that request become part of the record verbatim, and that way we're not mixing any of their intent into their letter. All of those letters are available to you for your deliberations today. If you would like to suspend your rules, you could ask that those be read into the record, but it is best preference that we note those and provide those to you as presented.
So do you have a tally of the ones that came in, just to be able to say how many opposed and how many...
We can do that for you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Closed, public hearing. Let's bring it back to council for action. Questions of staff, questions of the developer, questions of the appellate. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just got a few questions on what we can answer. In 2006, when the council approved this, was Walmart in that package?
The answer to your question, Councilman Schmidt, is yes and no. Yes, Walmart was contemplated as being an original tenant in this development. However, none of the documentation submitted to the council or approved as part of the handbook mentioned any tenant by name.
Well, J.C. Pettis mentioned my name, Mountain RV, there's a whole bunch of them mentioned my name on it, Rex's, T-Rex, Dynastore, there's a whole bunch of them that was mentioned my name and mapped on out. Now, when you say contemplated, that means there was discussion between the developer and staff that Walmart would be in the package, correct?
Yes. In fact, in this particular case, staff did see elevations for Walmarts.
And according to, because I was involved in those negotiations with staff and the developer on this, that it was very much encouraged to the developer to pull Walmart out because Walmart could not produce preponderance of evidence for, between the Starbond legislation, that 51% of all sales had to go from people outside of this region. That was the reason why Walmart was no longer contemplated, but excluded from the package, the actual package brought in front of the council.
I cannot speak to that, Councilman.
My recollection was Walmart decided not to come, is what happened. It wasn't, had nothing to do with preponderance. If they would have thought they could be successful, they would have been here. Target could not prove preponderance of 51% of people coming from out of the area, yet they thought it was a good place to come, they came.
And they were approved.
Correct. I can tell you, Councilman, in my world, things are somewhat black and white as a planner, looking at physical development standards, and in this case, the financing for the project as a whole. So whether or not Walmart or someone else made a decision to exclude that tenant based on financing issues, I cannot speak to that.
I know at the state legislative or the state tourism marketing committee it was talked about, so, do we have anyone here from finance?
I don't believe Mr. Kronk is here.
Do you have a question, Ron?
Yes, sir. My question, and I'll repeat it for Jeff, that comes is that we have two Starbond loans on this package right now. We have senior debt and we have subordinate debt. Senior debt is to, it was made public through the state legislature and everything, very specific guidelines to it. The subordinate debt, or in this case, private debt, was debt that Red's Development issued bonds for in conjunction with their bank and everything. Is that correct?
Yes, there is. Senior Starbonds that were issued under the approval of the City of Sparks, and there are subordinate Starbonds which are held by Red Development until such time as there is capacity for a future public sale, which would make those public bonds. And so they are holding those and the risk associated with them until such time as there's sufficient revenue for a bond to be successfully marketed by the city council.
So right now with the senior debt, we're, we make enough money for those payments, plus we help pay the subordinate debt off at this time. Every six months, we make our payment.
That is, your question is correct. We are currently in a surplus situation on the senior Starbonds issued by the City of Sparks. Under the development agreement, we are making payments to the developer for the retirement of the subordinate debt which they hold.
So according to just rough calculations of what an average Walmart does and where the money comes from in the Starbond District, there's going to be about $3 million worth of, excuse me, there's going to be about $7 million with the Starbond taxes generated, and which 75% of that, roughly $5.5 million, will be used for debt payment. So since we already make enough on the senior debt, is it to be assumed that all additional money generated by Walmart in the Starbond Districts goes to paying off the developer?
It would be first used for senior bond debt, as you have indicated, and it could be subsequently used by the city council if there's sufficient capacity to convert subordinate debt. And you're also correct that if there are excess proceeds, those would be paid to the development developers for the retirement of their, of the debt they currently hold, which are awaiting, as I said, Starbond availability.
We're not going to use this $5 million to turbo senior debt, correct? To pay off the debt the taxpayers have assumed?
There isn't sufficient capacity to reach the provisions of this developer agreement to turbo bonds until subordinate debt is satisfied.
So basically, I take away that every dollar that's done in sales taxes in Walmart goes to Red Development until such time that Red Development is fully satisfied with their debt. Is that correct?
That would be somewhat incorrect, Mr. Schmidt, because 75% of the Starbonds, only 75% of the sales tax within the 147-acre development site is used for Starbonds. 25% of the sales tax collections are sent to the state for distribution by formula. So in the case of the 25%, the City of Sparks would receive, based upon historical sales tax figures, approximately 13% of that. So the general fund of the City of Sparks would receive approximately 13% of the 25% that would go to pay for public services.
And thank you for correcting me, because you're absolutely right. I should have clarified when I meant the 75%. So $100 million with the sales, 7.25% sales tax, $7,250,000, 0.75 of that is roughly $5.4 million. So $5.4 million a year of revenue goes to Red Development, and $2 million a year go to the state, and we get 13% of that back. Yeah, I think I made my point on that real quick, who gets the money when this thing's approved? And then just one last comment on the noise. The gentleman had a noise issue. You're absolutely correct. You called the police department, and they're not going to come out on the noise issue. Community development would handle that because the City of Sparks does not have a noise origins. So it can make noise 24 hours a day, and it has to come back through community development. These folks here to do something about it, so it...
One question. So when a truck's island makes a noise at 10:00 p.m., the guy from Red Development, the director of the Red House, you call him at home, he shuts them up if he gets out of bed, goes to the toilet? Or you have a cop down there?
Okay, Bob, that's...
No, I...
Please. Thank you. Gave you too much latitude already. You're welcome. Any other questions? Questions for staff, questions for the developer, questions for the appellate? Looking for a motion then, I guess is the last thing. Whoop, question? Go ahead, Mike.
No, I do not have a question. I just have a comment. And I was going to go on to the math also, what Mr. Schmidt covered, but I just want to point out that I was the long no vote on this project in 2006 or '05, whenever we voted on it, only because of the financial package. At that time, it was supposed to be a tourist and entertainment destination, and we got nothing, as promised, okay? And I want everybody in this room to understand why Walmart is going in, and that's to pay the bills, okay? That's it. Pay the bills. If this, let me tell you right now, I have no problem with Walmart, because Professor Davis said it best. If you don't like Walmart, go somewhere else. If you don't like working for Walmart, don't work for them, okay? We put it on pyramid, we annexed that land just to get a Walmart out there, okay? And we did it. It's very successful. About 100% of that sales tax goes to the state. And I want everybody to understand that, that when this goes into the Starbonds District, only 25% goes to the state. Mr. Schmidt already covered that. If this thing was on the other side of the line from our Starbond District, I wouldn't be even talking right now, okay? But I'm going to have to say this. They never gave us anything that was promised. That, I have a bad, bad problem with that, okay? But they're putting everything in, and staff said it, I think at the last meeting, that they're putting everything in here to pay the bills. That's all it's doing. That being said, I have a hard time saying yes to this, okay? Only because of that. But let me tell you something right now. There's an attorney sitting in the front row who's going to be, if this goes down, it's going to, you know, basically, it'll probably go to court. I don't know if it's going to get there. Our city attorney's sitting here going, "What are we going to do?" Because here's the thing, it's a special use permit, there's six findings that have to be made. Unless there's somebody smarter than I am sitting on the city council, there's no way I can dispute any of them. So if I vote no on this, I got no legal leg to stand on. I know I shouldn't say that on the record, but it's true, because when you say no, you're going to say, "Okay, here's the finding, and I, and we can't make it." When you look at all the findings, I can't say that. It's got 37, I think, conditions of approval that's... It's got 37, I think, conditions of approval that Walmart acquiesced to, including building the road. That was the big one. I never thought Walmart was going to come up with the $7 million to build the, you know, to improve the road, but they did come up with it, okay? So there really isn't a legal, you know, leg to stand on from my point of view, but sometimes you've just got to say, hey, you've got to go with your gut feeling.
Mr. Lawson?
And I'm going to echo a lot of what Mike said, but the thing that, in my short time as a city councilman, the Star Bonds was a poorly written law, bottom line, poorly written. With that being said, we didn't get to write it. We have to live by it. So we're not the ones that get to say what does, what doesn't, whether it's 51% tourism or not. The bottom line is, the state and those assemblymen and senators, they wrote the law. We just have to live with it. So with that being said, I think Walmart, is it my first choice? No, but I think Walmart does a lot of good things for a lot of good people, and they're good neighbors, they've been good citizens in the places that they are. So at this point, we're just trying to salvage some tax dollars, and that's what it all comes down to. And Mike's absolutely correct. I don't have leeway, as a city councilman, to say, I like this, but I don't like that, if I have no legal way to prove that I like this project. So I don't have the ability to say, just because Walmart may or may not be all the things that I heard here today, I don't have the ability to say I agree or disagree and then vote that way. I only have the ability to look at it from a lawful standpoint, and lawfully, they meet the findings, and I agree. Look at Reno, they're being held up as these great developers of new small businesses over there. They turned down the Walmart on 7th Street, got sued, and guess what? They got a Walmart on 7th Street. So, or Mayan, rather. So it'll happen. It's, I mean, to me, it makes sense to do it. We do eventually have to pay these Star Bonds off, and Walmart is just as good a candidate as any in my mind. And the other thing I want to point out is I attended the meeting held by RED Development and Walmart with the neighborhood, the people in the adjacent neighborhood. I got not one complaint, not one issue about Walmart, and they're moving in there. There was probably 25 to 30 people there, and to a person, it was, you know, we know it's going to happen, it's good to, I think it's going to be awesome because I'm going to get fresh strawberries, or fresh raspberries faster, you know, to, I can walk here from my house faster. So I heard no complaints back then. It went right through, sailed right through the planning commission, and now it's here. It's, the horse has left the barn at this point. Thanks.
Anyone else, or somebody want to make a motion? Ma'am, the question time is over, I'm sorry. Public hearing is closed. Sorry. Mr. Lawson?
So my motion is going to be to deny the appeal.
Do we have a second?
Be good to have some findings in there, Councilman Lawson.
The findings in the staff report?
Just find that the staff report, the facts set out in the staff report have been validated and substantiated, and on those grounds, you would deny the appeal.
Okay. So, just what my attorney says. We're going to deny the appeal based on the findings of staff and the findings that the planning commission made. I didn't get that far down in my reading. I move to affirm the planning commission's action approval, approving the special use permit associated with PCN 12035, allowing for the construction of 180,000 square foot big box retail building. Adopt findings S1 through S6 and the facts supporting these findings are set forth in the planning commission staff report, subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 37 as listed in the staff report.
Do we have a second?
I'm going to second this motion to push it through for discussion, and then I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Ratty?
So, I personally feel very much between a rock and a hard spot here. I agree with a great deal of testimony that is in opposition to Walmart. I'm a big fan and a big supporter of the local, by local movement. I do think in general that big box stores are hurting local communities and the economic environment that is sustainable in communities across America and here in Sparks. I don't personally shop at Walmart. Much of the reading that I've done supports what several of the folks have testified to in terms of some of the challenges with wages, benefits, discrimination, those sorts of things. That said, my challenge here today is that none of those things are relevant. I've been thinking a lot about this particular decision. It's a tough one for me, I'll just be honest. And we lost somebody very special in this community this week, and it's probably not fair to drag his name into a local controversial land use decision, but I'm hoping that Mr. Anderson will forgive me. Bernie Anderson was a high school teacher at Reed High School where I went. And if he stood for anything, and that man stood for a lot of things, he stood for following the law. And I was elected to uphold the laws that are on the books. That would be the ordinances of the City of Sparks, the NRS statute that governs these sorts of things, and even the US Constitution. And the fact of the matter is, as much as I have looked for any reason that I could find to not be in support of putting a Walmart into a tax subsidized district, this is a land use decision, and the benefits that Walmart pays, the wages that they pay, their general business model is not legally relevant. So I have to look at it from purely a land use standpoint. Now, I have a concern there, and I've expressed that concern, and that concern is that whether Walmart was originally in the development or not is relevant, but I can tell you that there were four big box locations in the original development. And those big box locations were always contemplated as not necessarily being the part of the overall development that was going to generate tourism. It was, that assessment was on the overall development. By choosing to eliminate the RV park and add one more big box, we are shifting up that dynamic, but even there, there's nothing in the Star Bonds law, nothing in local ordinances that allows me to demand another economic analysis. It's just not there. And if somebody else believes it's there, I'd like to hear it, because I'd like to show me where in the law that allows me to demand a new economic analysis about whether or not this development is going to pencil, because I don't, I can't find it. So that said, it's purely land use. I don't like where it's going. I absolutely do not like where it's going. I think it impacts the neighborhood more than it, than the original location for the Walmart, or even taking Walmart's name out of it, the big box stores that were in this development. That said, land use law allows for mitigation. Our staff analyzed this, they asked for mitigation, and the applicant delivered that mitigation. So again, I find myself with no landing point to be able to say that on a land use basis, it's a special use permit on a land use basis, that I can say no. So even though my personal views, and believe me, if we could operate up here as if I was the queen of the world and I just got to choose whatever I wanted...
And she is.
There wouldn't be a Walmart going into the Star Bonds district. But I got elected to follow the law, and I see nothing in the law that allows me to vote no on a special use permit. So I'm tossing it over to you. If there's someplace in the law that you can see where I can demand an economic analysis or anything else that gives me a place to vote no, I'm open, but I got to see it.
Okay. Thanks. Anybody else? Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, now's the time for discussion. I said my piece before, but you know, Julia's more eloquent. I always love to follow her, and it always surprises people, and I agree 100% with her. So I agree 80% with her on this one, because I really haven't, I haven't got a problem with Walmart at all. I just have a problem with the entire development and how it came out. And I want RED Development to know that. I'm, you know, we lost Cabela's to Reno, we lost the AAA. I mean, I could go on and on and on, there's no casino going in. But once again, I'm smart enough to know that there's two, there's two attorneys sitting face to face, and our attorney's going, please give me a leg to stand on. We don't have a leg to stand on, and Julia's absolutely positively right. I looked at this thing every single way I could to figure out, and I'm pretty good at finding loopholes, let me tell you right now, because I've done it before. But there's absolutely no legal reason to turn this down. There is a, I mean, if I go on my philosophical reasons, yeah, great, but that won't get you a win in the court, and that's where this heads if we say no to it, let me tell you right now. And Mr. Mole is sitting there in the front row going, boy, this is going to be an easy one if they vote no. So I mean, it's like a piece of paper, he won't even make it to court. So, you know, going along with what Julia said, I don't want to, you have to follow the law. I mean, that's what my job is, so...
Okay, I haven't said my piece. I don't get to vote on this, but you know, I'm right in there with the land use deal. That's all it is to me, is a land use issue. You know, we're not, this is not a, Sparks is not a communist country. It's a democracy. We have to follow the law. There's nothing that says that we should turn this deal down. There's nothing in the law that says that we have to turn this down. We've made the findings. Is Walmart the best thing in this particular area? That remains to be seen. I think Walmart has taken a real whipping today, and I appreciate the people from Walmart that came down and told us they work here and how proud they are to work at Walmart and all that. They have jobs there, they're good jobs for the most part. I go there, their people are good, they're courteous, they're fine people to be involved with. But again, this comes down to a land issue. This is, there's not a reason here to turn this down, so I don't get to vote, but I would not turn this down. Anyone else? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mine is for, since we're on a legal, legal question here, we're bound by the Star Bonds legislation as well as land use planning. Does one supersede the other?
I think what you're talking, what you're talking about in the Star Bond has to do with contract. I think what Mike was alluding to was perhaps breach of contract. The land use laws will prevail in this particular instance because this is a land use issue. It's not a taxation issue, it's not whether or not REDS has somehow not met our expectations. This has something to do with fiscal restructuring, fiscal analysis. All those decisions were made back in 2006 by this council, the Nevada Board of Tourism, Board of County Commission, ultimately the governor himself, who said that this is a fiscally attractive project. What I heard today from Galaxy Theater, Shields, Buffalo Wild Wings, and Popeyes, was that this is doing exactly what it was anticipated to do, is to help out all the other satellite retailers. And I think it would be inappropriate now to try and get into the fiscal realities or the ramifications at this point in time and look directly at the land use provisions that were set before the city council.
So if I understand correctly, land use law is what we're talking about, if we have issue with failure delivery of the project, failure to follow NRS, Star Bond, all those things, that is a legal contract that we need to go ahead and file suit against RED Development to exercise those rights.
Certainly, filing suit is always an option. I've always tried to convince the city council that although I don't mind being in court, I certainly don't like to lose in court because then the taxpayers lose money because of it. But if that's something that you would like us to pursue, at least give you an analysis of, I'd be happy to do that.
Then with that, that I'll support the land use issue for the law, but I'm also going to ask, under comments by the council, that we immediately hire investigators and legal team to look at what was promised and not being delivered by REDS as far as, well as the intent of the money that was spent on the development and where that money's at and why, and why we're not at this point. I'll be asking that under counsel comment.
Certainly, with all due respect, I think that would be, because that's not an agenda today, that would be inappropriate matter for a future agenda, of course.
Thank you.
Can I just make one other thing?
Yes, go ahead.
I did want to, I just did want to say one other thing, because I think that they do yeoman's work and never get any recognition. So another reason that I'm really having a hard time accepting this appeal is that our planning commission does, they put a lot of time and energy into the decisions that they make. They get almost zero compensation and very little glory. And so for me to overturn their decision would require that I found that either they erred or that new evidence came forward, and neither of those things happened today as well. I also, on that note, wanted to thank the person who filed the appeal. I think that was incredibly diligent and courageous, and I think that a whole bunch of people in this room would like to thank you for having the opportunity to be heard. I wish I could support the position, but I do, I do appreciate that you took the time to get involved, because we spent a lot of time in this hearing with, in this room with nobody else involved. So I do want to thank you for doing that.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Everyone understand the motion?
Sean is...
No further discussion? Pardon me?
Mr. Carey is trying to get your attention.
Go ahead, Sean.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to ask Councilwoman Ratty if you still wish me to highlight any of the letters that received, or are you accepted?
If you've got a tally of support, I think it's, I want to respect that they wrote in and asked that their...
I'm happy to do that for you. We received a letter on January 9th concerning item 8.1 from Michael Russo. That letter was provided to the council, and he was the original appellant in this matter. We received a letter from, which was provided in support of the project concerning traffic and land use studies performed. This was additional information by, provided to Jeff McMahon, who forwarded it to the city council for your consideration. It included a summary of transportation and land use studies, so it does not have an opinion for or against the project. We received a letter to the city council on the, dated also the 13th. It is from Lisa Guzman. She was opposed to the project and cited many of the issues you heard today in opposing it based upon Walmart's issues. We received a letter from Kent Johnson. This was provided on Thursday, January 9th to the project, concerning the project. It contains basically a letter which was sincerely forwarded by Michael Russo. I'm unable to determine what particular action they were making, other than the letter was sent to the council for this agenda item. And then you have Michael Russo on January 9th providing you a letter, some two pages long, in opposition to the project, where he correctly put forth his arguments for your consideration. And finally, item for this item, a letter again, Jeff McMahon, provided to the city council, which was prepared by Frank Bedard, vice president, in support of the project, and it contained statements that Walmart was, was part of the original approved plan for the, for the development handbook, but its location has changed. And that would summarize the official correspondence you received in the matter. All those matters have been placed before.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else? Comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we can vote, I guess. Go ahead.
We can vote.
Go ahead, just came up. Passes 4-0 with one abstention. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for being here. We're going to take about it with the, it's okay with the council, take about a five-minute break. Let people kind of clear out, stretch their legs a little bit.
He did it right.
I already, I already did that.
Good job, Tim.
Very well.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, he kind of did.
Good job, Tim.
Very well.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Tim.
Very well.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Tim.
Very well.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
Yes.
Well, there...
There goes another loss, you guys.
Good job, Steve.
We have a motion by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt, to approve 6.1. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Go ahead, display. Passes unanimously with those present. 6.2, consideration of possible acceptance of a traffic study safety grant in the amount of 15,931 to fund the purchase of a police traffic radar units. Mr. Chief Allen.
Once again, we're coming before you. The Office of Traffic Safety through Nevada Department of Public Safety has grant funds available. In this case, we applied for $15,931 worth of police radar units. The radar units that we currently use are end-of-life cycle, and it would normally have to be replaced out of general fund expenditures. This is an opportunity for us to reduce our general fund expenditures in replacing the radar units with these grant-funded monies.
Questions? Mr. Lawson.
I didn't see in there how many we're on the, how many you're getting, Brian. I couldn't find the quantity.
And I don't have that number with me today as well. I just, they usually run-
Like 150 of them?
No, we will not get about 150. These are the newest LiDAR radar, top-of-the-line, goofy stuff that we have, so they probably run-
I'm just curious.
About 2,000 apiece.
Okay.
Generally.
Okay. You've got any other questions? Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Smith?
What are we doing? Apologize.
We're voting in favor of grant funds.
We were just about to buy some radar detectors.
Excellent, I like that.
I move to approve and accept the traffic safety grant from the state of Nevada Department of Public Safety Office of Training Safety.
Do we have a second? Mr. Smith, who says I've lost control of this meeting? Been a motion by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve 6.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Chief. Okay, 6.3, consideration of possible award of a contract to provide inspection and materials testing services for the North Truckee Drain Realignment Phase One. Mr. Hummel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the record, Andy Hummel, utility manager for the City of Sparks. This item before you today is a contract with construction materials engineers. The amount of $585,264 represents a year's worth of inspection and testing on the North Truckee Drain Phase One project. Additionally, there's 120 days' worth of overtime in there for when we'll be doing the Greg Street crossing. With that, all the inspection and testing for the project, making sure the concrete that we're getting is correct, the steel, the roadways, things like that. So, it's an important piece of the project, make sure we get what we're paying for from the contractor. That, like, any questions?
Questions for Mr. Hummel? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
I move to award the contract to provide inspection and materials testing services for the North Truckee Drain Realignment Phase One project with construction materials engineers in the amount of $585,264.
You have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Kerrigan to approve 6.3 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. 6.4, consideration and possible ratification of certain operational expenses for the Headworks emergency at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility from January 11th to 2013 through February 25th, 2013. Mr. Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Michael Drinkwater, Treatment Plant Manager. You have before you a staff report asking you to ratify the expenses that were incurred as part of the Headworks emergency that was declared on 11 January 2013 through the period 25 February 2013, when the lead for the emergency was transferred to the city of Reno. So, all of the costs incurred during the January, February period were of an operational nature carried on Tom Whorf's operational budget that allowed us to construct the bypass pump operation, get inside the building, make an assessment, determine what the proper, the plan would be to remedy the deficiencies found. Those costs have already been paid. They were paid under the authority of the city manager after the emergency was declared. We're bringing that forward to you now, just as on February 11th, 2013, we brought forward, the purchasing department, Mr. Maron, brought forward a worst-case estimate for you of 2.6 million for the operational side. We're pleased to report that number came in substantially lower. We're bringing, basically closing the books on the operational side of the emergency with this staff report. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this.
Questions for Mr. Drinkwater?
Let me comment.
Go ahead.
Michael, I'd just like to say that this is another emergency that was handled beautifully by our city, and I'm sure it could have cost a lot more than it actually did. So, kudos to you and the department and all of our public safety people out there. Good job.
Mr. Smith, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Good job.
Anyone else looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
I move that the city council approve the reconciliation of expenditures for the Tom Whorf Headworks emergency.
You have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve agenda item 6.4 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. 6.5, consideration and possible approval of the reimbursement to the city of Reno for Spark's share of the construction costs incurred during the capital project phase of the Headworks emergency at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. Mr. Drinkwater, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Michael Drinkwater, Treatment Plant Manager. What you have before you is a request for, to the approval to reimburse Reno for the costs incurred from February 25th through the close of the emergency. These costs were, when we transferred responsibility to the city of Reno, essentially it became a capital improvement project, albeit on an emergent basis rather than the normal planned basis. So, they took the lead. They signed the contracts with their, with the contractors based upon their authority with their declared emergency, and now we've come back to you requesting permission to reimburse the city of Sparks share of the 31.37%, which is typical, our ownership in the plant, as we would for any capital improvement project.
Quick explanation, maybe, Michael, explaining how this works with the dual ownership of the, of Tom Whorf, what Reno does and what we do.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city of Sparks owns 31.37% of the treatment plant. The city of Reno owns 68.63% of the treatment plant. The city of Sparks operates it, so all of the employees at the plant are city of Sparks employees, as I am. The city of Reno, through the inter-local agreement, is tasked with managing the capital improvement program. So, typically, those contracts, they would do the selection of consulting engineering firms, manage the design with a substantial amount of input from the staff of the plant. They don't do it in a vacuum, but then they would carry forward, they would do the public bidding for the construction, award the contract, which then this council would be asked also to ratify, and then, so I get, basically that's-
Reimburse them, okay.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Just trying to get this right while we're reimbursing them.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, so at the end, the city of Reno pays the contractor, pays the consultant, city of Sparks is reimbursed based upon ownership. Thank you.
Any other questions? Looking for a motion? Mr. Lawson?
Move to approve the reimbursement of the, to the city of Reno for Spark's share of the Headworks emergency.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve 6.5 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. 6.6 is consideration and possible approval of the reimbursement to the city of Reno in the amount of 141,841.34 for the Spark's share of the consulting agreement with Corillo Engineers, Inc. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and distinguished council members. For the record, my name is Todd Saxburg, Operations Manager, Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. What we have here before us today is reimbursement for a construction contract for KG Walters for the Tom Whorf Di-District Gas Conditioning Project. Four major benefits from approving this project are, we produce a gas that we can use in the plant for all of our boilers and renewable energy. Oh, I'm out of order. Okay. I thought they should go in a different order. Okay. What we have today is the CM contract for the project I just started to describe. This is construction management for the Di-District Gas Conditioning Project. It's in the amount of $400,000. Are there any questions on this?
I'm looking at something different.
Question?
Ron 6.6?
6.6. This is for the agreement with Corillo Engineers, Inc. for construction management service facility with Di-District Gas Conditioning System Project at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility.
Our share is 33.34.
Okay. Our share is 141.
Yes, our share is 141,841.34.
Right. Looking for a motion?
I want to approve that the council grant the reimbursement of the city of Reno, Spark's share, to the city of Reno for Spark's share of the construction management agreement in the amount of 141,841.34.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve 6.6 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. 6.7 is consideration and possible approval of reimbursement to the city of Reno for an award of a contract to KG Walters Construction Company, Inc. for construction of the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Di-District Gas Conditioning System Project. Go ahead.
Once again, Todd Saxburg, Operations Manager, Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation. This is the construction contract for the construction management. This is being given to KG Walters. They won the bid at $4,441,500,000. They received a local 5% bidding preference. The four major bonuses in approving this contract are, we generate a cleaner usable gas for renewable energy projects at the treatment plant. We come into compliance with national and local air quality regulations. We remove a NFPA safety area in the di-ester basements that all the piping gets pulled up to the top, and the piping is no longer underground. If, for NFPA current regulations, that piping has to all be continuous instead of have valves and joints within it, and it allows less maintenance and less work on our boilers and our sludge heaters. We will no longer have siloxane buildups that had plagued the plant before on this. Any questions on this?
Questions on the contract of the di-ester?
Actually, I have a question.
Go ahead. Actually, that's okay.
I'm going to just show complete ignorance here. So, are there some contracts that the 5% local preference applies and other contracts that the 5% doesn't apply? And if this is not a fair, correct question to you, I also see Mr. Maron back there.
Mr. Drinkwater can speak to that. This is something done by the city of Reno where they apply for and are given a 5% local bidding preference.
Right. And I just haven't heard that before, so if I missed it, it's me, but help me understand why that's happening.
I can't speak to this bid particularly because it was run by Reno, but I can tell you that there is law under NRS 338 whereby contractors apply for a certificate of eligibility to earn a 5% preference in public works projects over $250,000, excuse me, that don't have any federal monies in them. So, in this case, you have a project well in excess of that, and if a preference was applied, by my understanding, the low bidder may have been an out-of-state concern and not have the certificate of eligibility where KG Walters would, and if their price was within 5%, by law, then Reno had to go to KG Walters.
By law, because the city of Reno has chosen to apply that preference, or by law, because any bid would be-
Because it's required under NRS.
Okay, so the city of Sparks would be using that same standard?
Correct.
Okay.
We do today.
Any other questions?
So-
Go ahead.
With that, I will move to approve that the council grant the reimbursement of, am I on the right one?
You have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve 6.7 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. 6.8 is consideration and possible approval to purchase two fire pumpers from Fire Trucks West Rosenbauer in the amount of $1,081,448.
Good afternoon. Ron Corman, Fleet and Facilities Manager. For the record, Fleet Services is seeking permission to spend $1,081,448 to purchase two new fire pumpers from Rosenbauer Fire Trucks West. The current leases are being closed out, and this is our opportunity to begin replacement of the fire fleet without additional monies from the general fund, other than what has historically been spent on lease payments for fire apparatus. The budget for the fiscal year 14 vehicle replacement program includes these trucks, and the funds are available. This purchase is the first phase of a 15-year sustainable plan to renew and update our entire fire fleet. Upon completion of the 15-year cycle, the city will no longer be committed to a lease. We will have saved the interest charges, and we will have established a contingency fund for any unexpected losses or expenses with the fire fleet. Fleet Services and the Fire Department have worked closely over the last year to establish a specification for these new pumpers and have closely examined the manufacturers of fire apparatus, so that we are confident that we will be getting the best value for our money from the manufacturer that will be around for many years to provide support. I would like to thank Chief Andy Kosky, Battalion Chief Jim Reed, Captain Tom Koach, Operator Aaron Phillips, and Fleet Supervisor Terry Shackelford for all of their hard work in making this project take shape. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Corman, Mr. Kerrigan?
I just want to thank Fleet Services and the Fire Department for making it easy up here for us. It was a well-thought-out plan. You guys briefed me on it, and I really liked the way it came together, and it's really easy to do this because it's already budgeted for, so we don't have to sit here and look at where we're going to get the money and how we're going to do this. So, my hat's off to you for a well-conceived plan.
Thank you very much.
With that, I'll move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Kerrigan, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve 6.8 for the fire trucks. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, 6.9 is a first reading.
Bill number 2665, an ordinance by the city of Sparks amending Title 13 of the Sparks Municipal Code to increase the sewer use, user rates 8.25% annually from July 1st, 2014 through July 1st, 2017, and other matters properly related thereto.
Okay, this is the first reading of bill number 2665. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, January 27th, 2014. We have a public comment by Mr. Avney. Go ahead, Trey.
Thank you. For the record, Trey Avney with the Chamber of Commerce. I know you've seen me enough today, and so I'll try to make this quick, and I know that the public hearing's coming up later, but I attended the workshop on this issue a couple weeks ago, and then I want to thank Mr. Martini, Mr. Krutz, John Martini, not Mayor Martini, Mr. John Martini, Mr. Krutz, and Mr. Drinkwater for coming in and talking to the Chamber's Business Advocacy Council and went through a very similar presentation that you did at the workshop. And, and so, we are in support of the 8.25% increase that has been presented to you today after looking at all the other options that you were presented with as well, but we support fully funding the capital improvement projects, both with the feeder lines and a Tom Whorf. So, if, with that increase, and you don't see the chamber come up here and support increased fees a lot, but we believe it's important to maintain our infrastructure that we have. We already have issues with schools and other things that have come up in this community. We think it's important to make sure that these are fully funded. We're not anti-amoresco savings, and in fact, in the future, if those projects can, can be done cheaper, or if there is additional money found through, you know, money that you don't expect to have right now, we, of course, are in full support of any conservation measures to save money over time, but we felt that, given the options, that we felt that fully funding 100% of CIP with that 8.25% increase was the better way to go. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Trey. Appreciate it. 6.10, consideration and possible approval of elected official appointment to the Regional Planning Governing Board. Mr. Kerry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city of Sparks has three appointments to the Regional Planning Governing Board.
We have also an alternate, and the term of the alternate, Mr. Ron Smith, did unfortunately expire out of time for your usual appointments, and that would have, would have occurred on January 30th, 2014 of this year. At this time, the council is asked to appoint someone to fill this position. Mr. Smith has indicated his willingness to continue to serve on the board, or the council may select another member to serve in his capacity. With that, we have provided you a recommended motion and look forward to your action.
Questions?
Do we have a second choice?
Motion.
I move to confirm, confirm the reappointment of Councilmember Ron Smith as an alternate of the Regional Planning Governing Board to January 30th, 2016.
You have a second?
I couldn't help it.
You have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve the appointment to the Regional Planning Governing Board alternate. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Public hearing, we've done. Comments? Comments from the public? Anyone in the public would like to make comments? Comments from the city council and city manager? Go ahead.
Mr. Tracy, I know you just got a new van, or you're getting a new van. Is it something we might want to wrap like we did those buses? I mean, I thought that was pretty impressive when we did that.
Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. That certainly, if the funding is available, we can consider that. We might be able to seek some grant funding to, to do a wrap. It'd be considerably less than what we did the buses, but it's a great idea.
Yeah, a little more. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Schmidt?
On agenda items, we have a discussion for the council. It appears that a DDA is no longer a valid document, that land use planning can supersede a DDA. I really think that this process was over 130 million taxpayer dollars, and should be taken a look at, is if this project is moving along in the way, the spirit and the intent of the DDA, and where all that 132 million has gone to for that development, that DDA. So, I'd like to bring that forward to the council for discussion.
Anyone else? I have a couple, too, Sean. I'd like to bring forward an agenda item so that the city council can direct staff to bring forward amendments to Title 20 as necessary to comply with Assembly Bill 87, which requires consistency among local governments, zoning ordinances, and respective development standards for public schools in Washere County. And I'll give you this when I'm done. Secondly, I would like to request that the manager bring forward an agenda item to provide the city council the opportunity to direct staff to prepare amendments to the municipal code to permit the sighting and licensing of medical marijuana establishments in Sparks in conformance with SB 374. Okay, anyone else?
I've got one, too.
Go ahead. Go, go.
I would like to ask staff to bring forward an agenda item to see if the council has an appetite to move forward on consideration of banning puppy mills within the city's jurisdiction.
Want to have puppy mills?
Say, make puppies?
Got it, Sean?
Don't answer that.
Anyone else?
In case we didn't hear, we got an announcement from our city manager that he's going to be retiring on what date? April 4th?
April the 4th.
Okay, and I just want to say congratulations. Thanks for your service, and live well.
Thank you, sir.
And it's not over yet.
Yeah, it's not getting out that easy.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing none for the business, we're adjourned.